Three, two, one, action.
Hi, everyone, and welcome back to the Hendrick Hudson Board Meeting. Today is May 7th, 2025. We are going to rise for the pledge of allegiance. We are just wrapping up our tenure reception to our tenure recipients. Congratulations to them. And we're going to pause here for a few minutes and have our public hearing on the 25-26 budget. At this time, this is the time period where anyone could come to the meeting and voice their last-minute thoughts and feelings on the budget for conversation. Carmen, is there anyone here to ask any questions?
No.
Okay, so we'll wait. This was scheduled for 7:30, correct?
Just updating everybody as far as the stating goes, because I know that was an item that was still hanging out after we adopted the budget. And actually, the governor, there's only a general agreement, and they haven't come to a final budget yet at the state level. I understand there's nine budget bills that are still unresolved, and they expect things to be resolved in the next two weeks. So more to come. And we should know before the vote, but I don't know, you know, how much would change between now and then. They haven't really indicated what is changing, if anything. I mean, I feel like the impression is that if it was going to be anything major impactful to schools, they would have, you know, indicated that.
Thank you.
Yep.
You have any questions? What will we do?
7:35 now.
7:35.
Yeah.
So we're going to move on to the approval of our agenda for the evening. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor? This is the time where we hear from audience comments on non-agenda items.
There is none.
Thank you. We move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to pull from the consent agenda? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, now it moves us to audience comment. Nope, now we're at the, oh, donation. That's in fact, sorry. All right, tonight we have a donation, very generous donation, of $2,325 for the Barbara Haxton Science Scholarship Fund. This is to the Office of Special Education. It has received this donation to be utilized to pay for partial summer camp funding for students with handicapped and conditions. This is very generous, thank you very much. Do you have a motion to approve the donation?
Second.
All in favor? Now it's the hearing of the public on agenda item.
There is no, nobody signed it.
Okay. And then we had a hold for presentation and discussion, which I think we're okay. We're not.
We're not having anything.
It was, and then superintendent's update.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. So just some notes for our community. Let me start by saying, if you haven't noticed, it's Teacher Appreciation Week, and we want to say a loud thank you to all of the fabulous teachers in this district that give their all every day. I know that our children are excited to come to school every day and learn from them, and we certainly appreciate working with them and moving the district forward. It was also Nurses Appreciation Day, I believe, yesterday. So thank you to the nurses in our schools. Again, you are underappreciated for the things that you do. We know how much the kids feel comforted when they come to you in times of trouble, skin needs, ice packs. So we appreciate your kindness and your consideration as you comfort them. A note to the community, Saturday, May 10th is the Philibus Food Drive at the high school main entrance from 10 to 12. A very worthy cause, please do contribute and show up if you can. Congratulations to our high school robotics team. I believe right now, I know that this is happening this week, so I'm not really sure where they're at, but they are competing in the Vex Robotics World Championship, and we look forward to updates on how they've done this week in the competitions. Congratulations to Bloomout Middle School on being named a PLTW Distinguished Gateway School. Gateway is the program that leads into the PLTW work at the high school. It is concert season. I could go on for days about all of the many wonderful performances that are going on across the district, and I encourage you and invite you to look at the district calendar, and please make sure you can attend some of those wonderful performances. May 14th is the, am I correct? May 14th is still the Board of Ed candidate at Hendrick Hudson Free Library. What time is that?
7:09.
7:09, thank you. And lastly, to all of my colleagues, a very happy Mother's Day. We are looking forward to good weather, I believe. So please enjoy, take the accolades that you so richly deserve. And lots of gifts, so. That's the end of the superintendent's report. I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Dr. Garcia, for any updates from HR.
Sorry, I'm just chewing on some fruit. No, you know, obviously, the tenure event was pretty much my update, but just want to let the community know that we are moving along with our search for the next director of athletics and also are looking for the expiration of our next middle school principal. And also, you know that we posted for high school principal. So we are in good shape right now. We are on target with our dates and our timeframe. I just want to thank also all the members of the faculty staff, but also parents who contributed to surveys as we look for these positions, especially recently the middle school principal, but also in the focus groups. So thank you for those, for that feedback. And based on it, we're developing a profile for what we want to see in our next middle school principal. Again, it's a similar formula that we used for our previous positions, and we'll be doing the same approach for the high school positions. I actually met with a student high school leadership group a couple of weeks ago, and they were very insightful, and I appreciate their feedback in terms of what they're looking for at the next high school.
Okay. I know Jill, you already had a chance to speak. Did you want to add anything?
Just, you know, I don't think, I don't think we can remind people enough that the budget vote is Tuesday, May 20th, at our FGL Elementary School between 7:00 AM and 9:00 PM. Budget documents are available on our website, including the line-by-line budget. Questions can be sent to myself or the superintendent. Leave a message, we can call you back. We can take calls during the day or emails. The final budget book is, has been prepared, if anybody is interested in looking at that. We've added some documentation to that to update it and have further information than we had on March 15th. And the newsletter, the budget newsletter is going out this week, so that should be arriving in homes five or six days prior to the budget vote. The business office is going to be having its internal audit risk assessment May 19th and 20th, and we've started to interview for treasurer replacement. So business office is busy as usual.
Thank you. Press, do you want to fill us in on any updates for PPS?
Sure. We are winding down our CSC annual review season, so that is coming to an end. I'm sure all the chairs and teachers will be thrilled about that. In addition to that, we are in the final or late stages of our ESY program planning that will take place from July 7th to August 15th, serving our ABC and Salem population at Franchi and Hendrick Hudson High School over the summer. And Dr. Kleiman asked me to share that the Bosse's Technology Center applications are starting to come in from Bosse's. They're hopeful to have everything by May 31st to determine whether or not students have been accepted to that program. And finally, I just want to continue to highlight our May 21st SEPTA meeting, looking to highlight and showcase some of the, or many of the mental health professionals in our district and all the supports that we have to offer to families. So encouraging all parents and families to come out for that and to see all the supports we have in place here at Hendrick Hudson and all the wonderful staff.
Thank you. Thank you for that technology.
Good evening, everyone. Sometimes when I make these updates, if you like, nobody understands what I'm talking about. I'm glad to repeat anything or be more human-friendly as possible. But the first thing is MFA. But by now, you all should know what MFA is, multi-factor authentication or two-factor authentication. After very long conversations in the district, we finally, last week, I sent out an email to the staff saying we're enforcing multi-factor authentication for all staff as of June 30th. I was at the middle school faculty meeting this week, and Nikki Stabell, our facility, technology facilitator, was at BB. We're hoping to get to high school and also FGL on the June faculty meeting, telling staff, we started telling staff to ease them up from like, you know, they're afraid about connecting to the Wi-Fi, like, we're looking, that type of thing. So we had a very good, I actually had a very good conversation with the middle school. There are a lot of questions, but I think we're in a good place. They feel like they can move forward with doing the MFA. Of course, they don't like it, but, you know, I think we're in a better place now. So we're hoping to have that tied down by June 30th. I'm sure you saw the email that I sent out at 6 o'clock today about the new TikTok challenge. Funny enough, this weekend, my kids, who were also teenagers, were talking about it at home, and I'm thinking like, ah, they're not going to do that, come on. Like, then Monday morning or Tuesday, I started to get emails from our 910, which is the New York Technology Educators Group. Walthamshire School District was let out at 8:00 a.m. because said Chromebook was on fire. Artsley had applied, like, there's a lot of districts around the area that were reporting in the group, like, kids were doing this. So we sent out that email. If you're listening at home, please, please talk to your kids about it. It is not taken lightly. I actually heard late in the day today that there's a district that's actually filing criminal charges against the students because they had a lot of property damage. So please talk to the students. What they're trying to do is they're taking lead from the pencil and trying to put it into the USBC void and trying to spark spotting and catch us on fire, so. So please talk to your children at home not to do it. The other thing is Jill mentioned about the risk assessment. So IT is going through a risk assessment with our internal auditor. There's 18 controls, about 180 questions that we're going through. Nice, our auditor is nice enough to take its little piece on this. So I'm only on control four. In two weeks, I have another two controls, so he's been taking two controls at a time. Each control is about 10 to 12 questions, depends on how deep the area going to. So it's a lot of documentation, a lot of questions. But you probably talked about me saying during the budget time, like, one of my initiatives is to get NIST, which is the National Institute for Standards and Technology. So having that in this framework basically says, like, you have things in order, everything is checked. So these controls and questions that they're going through is in this framework. So we're on that. And the last thing is, as you may have heard me say, like, we are onboarding, on mid-onboarding managed IT through Bosse's. So there's been a lot of, a lot of group calls and check-ins on that process. We're hoping to have be onboarded with the support through Bosse's as of July 31st. We have InterTech staff actually facing out on June 30th for tech support. We'll still have few hours of remote support through InterTech for data, because we do need that. But everything else should be in order, we've been taking same thing, going through each one of our systems, then going on by line, matching up to their standards and our standards, making sure that we're in agreement with what, how we want the computer to device us to look at field light, our user experience, things like that. So we're also maybe deep in that as well. So that's my update.
Okay, I'll circle back and give the curriculum update. We are on the throes of testing season at every single level. So we are uber-focused on getting through this particular period. We just had APs of high school. We should be getting to the end of the three-through-eight window, I think, in a week or so. Nice, that as well will wind down by June 1st. So that's really the bulk of our focus right at this moment, and then we shift immediately, if not sooner, into completely looking at 25-26 and what we'll be doing with program, with placement. I will give a public service announcement again. I feel like I'm the registration queen. If you are out there listening and you have a kindergarten student or a UPK student who will be, who will be born by December 1st, please get them registered, because we are rolling into screening period where your child will come in for some brief assessments. You'll have an opportunity to meet with the program directors and the principals and understand what those two programs will be all about, this is the school. So we are anxious to have you register, so you can take advantage of those opportunities. We have an early release day coming up on May 19th, and in that afternoon, we do a lot of our placement and transition work in the district. So elementary schools will be looking at class placement for next year. We will have opportunities for five and six, and then eight and nine to speak to each other, especially as it relates to service providers, AIS folks. So we are rolling right into that particular season. Many of you know that, I think, in our last board meeting, we appointed Lauren, who will be replacing me as the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. Lauren has begun transition with my position, so we are inviting her to all of our meetings, if she can make it. We also understand she's trying to run the high school through a very busy time of year as well, but we want her to be fully informed and very comfortable with all of the groups that she will be meeting with before we completely break that connection. So that's where curriculum is right now. Thank you, Erica.
Thank you. Great, great updates. Thank you, everybody. This moves us on to our next, is the Westchester Perkins School Board of Savings Association Administrative Budget and Board Election. But we will be voting on that, just trying to look at that. There's news. Um, that's the budget. So we need to, we vote individually, Carmen, or as a board?
Yeah, we do it as a board.
Okay. So we are voting on the Westchester Perkins School Board Association Annual Meeting ballot, cast our district's vote on the Westcut Nominated Committee for the 25-26 slate of officers, directors, and budget ratification. So the first is ratification of the 25-26 WPSBA budget. Do I have a motion to put this forward? Please, motion. Second, all in favor? And the second is a slate of officers for the members of the Board of Directors, as stated in the board docs. Do I have a motion to approve this slate of directors?
Motion.
Second, all in favor? Okay, so we should be put there. We have our board communications discussion next. So we have been talking a lot this year about our communication with the community, how we reach them, and, you know, they, we had the thought exchange, which showed us that we, the families are, seem to be overall, I think we found that seem to be overall happy with Parentsware. Talk about some solutions. Solutions, they also want, they want more specific text messages and emails. We had sent a newsletter out earlier in the year. We sent a couple of postcards this year. We're, what I thought we would do tonight is sort of, is discuss where we want to go with that, if we think we've been okay. Do we want to do, we're going to have, the soundings is going to come out, the budget book that's going to have a letter from, a letter from me that has details about the budget. So how else do we want to communicate with the community? Do anyone have any thoughts or ideas?
I just have a couple of thoughts that, when I saw this topic coming out. I, you know, we talked about the newsletter, which you just mentioned, and we did one. So I was just thinking for next year, maybe we take a look, or maybe over the summer, we take a look at the calendar and like, schedule before, you know, because we were going to do a quarterly and like, figure out in advance like what the deadlines are, so we can sort of more easily stick to those, you know, guideposts as timing for just those four main newsletters. And then I did a bit of a deeper dive into the information that we're going to have when we have the new upgraded diligent community.
We're going to talk about that separately.
Yeah, so, but this is in response to the text.
Okay.
The, I know we said everyone wants emails, which we have. And, you know, maybe it's, maybe it's in the emails, simplified messaging, whatever that means. But it looks like from the best assets that diligent community has to offer is an ability to do a texting function to people that you can opt in for. So I think that automatically, that's going to become something that, when we use that next year, that it's going to be much easier to do. You can also opt in to certain texts directly, so you can get reminders for meetings. And so I think organically, by upgrading to this new program, which is probably part of the point of the whole thing, it's going to get a little bit more transparent, a little bit easier for people to understand the language that's spoken in the meeting. They do simplified summaries of each of the board meetings.
We're going to watch it with you.
Yes.
I'm not getting worried there.
That link is not working, just so you know. The link takes you to the website.
Okay.
Because I just tried to click to see what that was, because one of the things I was looking at was whether or not they have videos for the community to get. You know, they have all the ones for internal, but I didn't know if they have like a how-to video for people to, you know, in the community to look at what it has to offer. And if that's it, then great, I hope there's some nowhere.
I'm sure they have a lot of things we can, yes, I'm looking at their their website. Their website right now. Right, do you have access to that link?
Like, I'll send you up the link.
Okay, we don't need it yet. I want to go back to just talking about a communications plan.
Yeah.
So we probably need to come up with a communications plan at some point, and then like, who's, like, who's in charge, like, who's the go-to person on board? I mean, I may not be sitting here next year. You need to have a go-to person that's going to take ownership a little bit, make sure that they like, what are we, what would we put in our newsletter, what's the board working on?
Yeah. I'm happy to leave you on that, if that's simple.
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to leave on that, and then, you know.
We can figure out an instructor for like, what we think is needed, and maybe the quarterly newsletters are too much, because there's the budget newsletter, and there's like so many other things. I think our goal is not to like, send people too many things.
I think it's like, what we did, it's a fine line. But how I see it, and after three years of doing this, I think what we sent out, which was our goals, was like, a really good way to set up, to set up, set up the year, because this is what the goals are, this what we're working on, this is what we established, and I thought that was a really great, great, that was like, it was really purposeful, right? So, and meaningful at the time. Since then, I think we're all working so much all the time. And this, and the board meetings are showing our work so clearly. Maybe we just have to come up with a way to summarize.
Yeah, and I also think, I'm not going to be boring people to tears with the new diligent, but it also has the ability to like, generate problems like that, like newsletters and, you know, year messaging. So I feel like once we get more used to like, all the things it has to offer, we can harness it like as simply as possible.
So the, and I just wanted, just the board docs. So the board docs, just so everyone's clear, it's not, it's not a communication tool necessarily for the community. It's really a communication tool for the board to do our work and then share out, so it's, it makes it more transparent, right? It's more transparent for the community, because it's more clear to use, it's more easy, the messaging is more clear, and it truncates things and policy is like very clean. But it really is, it's going to be an improved tool for us to use.
Yeah, I think on both sides of it, because I often hear people saying like, I don't know where to find this, and the board often says it's on board docs, it's on board docs. So if that is going to be something that we send to community members, it should ideally be a place that we can all navigate.
Yeah, I mean, we have a hard time, you know, navigating this. This will improve it.
Yeah.
I mean, Carmen, this is going to be a lot, Carmen's going to work to roll this out and make sure that it's all, you know, so that they have a, they have a pretty good timeline, which we have, I think, do we put that online, Carmen?
Put it on, yeah. I'm hoping by October, we'll be up and running, yeah, thinking, end of September, yeah.
And then I think they run, they keep board docs on for like a month or two, and then they make it read-only, so you can keep using it, but you can refer to it.
I have a question. Why, well, you're talking about newsletters, so why don't we just, or you might just have this, why don't you just do one at the beginning of the year and one at the end of the year? Very like a
It's got so much, I think we found that there's so much communication.
Yeah, but if you're like summarizing, just like, it doesn't have to be a multi-page newsletter. It could just be something like summarizing how we think we did this year based on what we said we were going to do earlier in the year. And, you know, just an introduction.
Just send them a June of a wrap-up.
Yeah. Yeah, and you could like introduce them there, like, who was coming on the board for next year, and, you know, you people leaving and put a terrible, or something, you know, like, you could make it like a, you know, like, it's personal.
I think those are a given, like, the beginning and the end. I think the rest of it is just looking at the calendar and figuring out.
Or maybe it's not necessary, and it's me, and because everyone, I know what's going on.
Just so much of it, and the being budget communication, and we're doing so much budget communication.
Yeah. It should be in the middle, just so you get. And maybe it's not a newsletter, maybe it's something that's like, maybe it's videos that we do. Like, it could be, it could be a lot of different things that, you know.
Or like mid-year, then like, yeah.
Yeah. Middle and one of the, yeah.
Maybe like after winter breaks or before winter breaks or something.
Enjoy this long newsletter as you sit in front of your fire for Christmas break.
Maybe, yes.
Something to consider when you're talking about the newsletter is that it is pretty costly. I just want to say that.
Printed, yeah. Yeah, we're, yeah, we're copying emails.
I don't want to get into all that like right now, because we really didn't talk about it, but, oh, okay. So electronically, we're talking about.
Yeah, I think we're talking about electronic, separate of budget, right?
It's, yeah, it seems, it seems like, I mean, we're not reaching, we're not reaching our entire community, which is part of our issue. I think we, I think we as a board would just love to reach more people. I think the postcards do that, but they are costly. Maybe, maybe we said, maybe annually, the board should send out a postcard, the smaller size, the four-by-three-by-five or four-by-six postcard that just invites the community, as you just sign up for our newsletter.
Yep.
And that gives them that opportunity. I don't think that's a huge investment. I know we didn't necessarily budget for it, but that's not, maybe not something.
The newsletter, the newsletter is a totally different, you know.
Yeah, I'm talking about just a postcard inviting them to join our online community newsletter.
Yeah, because I know you can do that through Parentsware. I feel like if we supplement it with people that aren't on Parentsware, like the Lucas seniors and people that don't have kids in the district, it's going to be a lot less things to put in the mail.
We have to get them to join.
Right, you know what I'm saying, that we mail something only to that.
We can't do that. We can't do that.
Oh, why can't we do like a senior centers, like find the contact that's there and say, hey, as a board, we'd like to start sharing our week, our whatever it is, our updates with you, and then they can share it out to their to everyone that's there in their senior centers. I mean, that that may
This version?
Yeah.
Are you the print and not
Or just email that.
That's what I have my
Yeah, or just bring it as far as
When Mike went to this visiting the seniors, we brought the postcard with the year URL and then he explained how they can sign up and he did that when he met with them.
Some people.
We did, yeah.
That signed up.
Yeah, I just think there's there's a way to get them more of them on to our community update email would be at least a start.
Yeah.
And you know.
There's also a join list on our community, so whatever you send out, if you wanna
That's what I'm talking about. We want them to join.
Yeah, so they'll they'll automatically be included in the Parentsware email.
It just seems inherently like you're towards parents.
It really is. We just didn't want two separate systems.
I agree.
It's like PTA. Created the join list to like bring everybody in. Cuz we had a constant contact through both these.
Exactly.
Right, so.
And we have to opt out for like the information we want, but they don't need school updates. I just want they could just opt in and just like the board updates.
So we we have like a lot of people just wants to get the like after full closings and stuff like that, like the preschools and stuff. We do have a separate lineup for this. Um so if you go to the community join list, you can check off saying like, yes, I want all communication or you want closings or you want just the separate emails or PTA emails. So there's options for doing that.
No, we should just do a dropdown for like board updates so that if they wanna just sign up for that and they're not just getting stuff from like the schools or closings or whatever and that's all they wanna see them.
But I think we want them to see our weekly newsletters.
I think that's what you're saying.
What you're saying, they could
That's not the board, that's not us. You're not talking
But you're talking about the district.
Mike's updates and then Josh's updates, right? The district updates every Friday.
Right, but I think you're saying out of town for
Yeah, no, yeah.
Out of town for that, yeah.
They could get that.
Yeah.
As well.
Cuz I think that's that's the reason why a lot of them won't give you their email address, right? They just don't want all this mail coming from the school through their email, just ping, 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 and then they open it up and there's a hundred new things from the school and they're like, I'm not gonna be all this, so that would filter it out and give them just the things they wanna look at, and they might be more inclined to giving us their email address.
Like uh maybe to your point about a checkbox or dropdown, maybe like school operations slash parent student information and then general district information. Just those two sort of.
It's really a checkbox. Right now, we have, yeah, right now we have uh Hendrickson Alumni Organization is a checkbox. Join Hendrickson Community and then School Delays, Early Dismissal and Censor Notification. Those are the three that we have as the dropdown or checkbox. So they don't have to do all three, they can just check whatever they want.
Again, I think that the diligent is gonna have like opt-in and it's on it as well, so we should see first what it will have cuz they not maybe like people can opt in for board only. You know, it's another thing, like we'd be good to keep it
Like member hub.
All, yeah, all in one place, like you said.
Yeah. We have that too.
There's no one.
Was it lineup that you're getting? It's what's it's called?
Giveback now.
It's called giveback now. Yes, that's a PTA thing and then they send you text messages.
But Parentsware is definitely the wave. I feel like more districts are now moving to that platform. We just were kind of in the first one. We were early. We were early. Thanks, Anita. But a lot of districts are now moving to that platform.
The thought change our reader or uh we can do the thought exchange anytime. Um we just need to have a prompt that we think is worthy. I mean, it really Mike will probably use it more than we would, but if we if next year, if there's something next year that we think that is thought exchange worthy, not that I I may not be, I'm taking notes for everybody else for next year. Um thought exchange, um we can send one out if we think there's something, you know, the board thinks something is important to share or get feedback. I just wanted to to Cory's project, I wanted to demo, give everyone an idea of the board and you know, in the community, an idea of what this looks like. So are you gonna show a short video?
Communities are complex networks of people, relationships, and institutions. And elected boards are at the center of it all. Governance management for education on local government is no small task. You want to streamline the governance process, build trust through transparency, and positively impact your community. But administrative inefficiencies, increasing public scrutiny, and heightened security concerns are slowing you down. Enter Diligent Community. Brought to you by the trusted team behind Board Docs. It's the next generation governance solution tailored for public and elected boards. Diligent Community empowers you to create and manage your agenda effortlessly. Picture this, a simple drag and drop agenda builder that adapts to your unique needs. Create a customized workflow to allow submission of agenda items from across your organization. And easily assign an update designated or alternate approvers to keep items flowing. You can preview both public and private agendas before publishing. And even schedule the agenda release for a specific date to comply with your organization's open meetings requirements. Let's face it, ensuring that public meetings run smoothly is a key part of your responsibility. With Diligent Community, you can engage participants and execute your meetings more efficiently. Project the agenda and attachments onto the screen to follow along while easily capturing meeting minutes and keeping detailed records of every motion and vote, whether digital or manual. The governance of public organizations is a 24/7 job. Access Diligent Community on any device, ensuring seamless connectivity wherever you are. Receive text or email notifications upon agenda release for a quick and easy way to stay informed. Access documents directly on your mobile device or print full agenda packets with attachments in a single step. Board members can review and annotate agendas and supporting documents privately with confidence using purpose-built tools backed by industry-leading security. Keep your community informed with a single source for meeting agendas, live stream broadcasts, minutes, and policies. Members of the public can experience the added benefits of powerful search tools to easily find information. Request to speak during public comment sections and subscribe to meeting notifications so they never miss a beat. The integrated calendar enables positive public engagement for an inclusive experience that reflects your commitment to building trust and transparency all while maintaining ADA accessibility standards for all of your public and elected boards' published information. As public needs shift, Diligent Community is here with enhanced capabilities that go beyond the essentials. These add-on features are a powerful set of tools for public and elected boards, providing a tailored fit for your organization's advanced needs. From creation to approval, Policy Publisher effortlessly guides policies through each stage of your organization's policy lifecycle. Draft, review, and adopt policies and publish to your online handbook with integrated Microsoft Office tools for seamless staff collaboration. Simplify your policy records and public requests. Policy Publisher for Diligent Community maintains an auditable version history and timeline for each policy. Committee Manager allows for seamless control and enhanced collaboration. Effortlessly manage multiple governing bodies and leverage the same powerful tools for distinct groups easily maintaining permissions and access for committee members. But that's not all. Empower your community by enabling them to subscribe to notifications for meetings or specific committees and working groups. Livestream Manager lets you engage your community with the seamless integration of livestream video where timestamps and live closed captioning improve transparency and accessibility. Embed video alongside agendas and meetings, enabling the public to stay in the loop no matter where they are or what device they're on. The call for transparency, efficiency, and accountability is louder than ever. With over two decades of knowledge and innovation for public and elected boards, Diligent Community is the next generation governance solution designed to modernize the experience for your staff, board members, and the public. Are you ready to experience the future of governance for education and local government? Diligent Community by Diligent, the leading governance risk and compliance SaaS platform trusted by over 750,000 board members worldwide.
So I think this has a lot of, Cory, what you've been asking for um with like being able to get community involved because then they can sign up for what they want, right? Then they could sign up for do they wanna know when our meetings are? Do they wanna watch? Do they wanna do that? So I kind of feel like this has a lot of what This is more like internal focused on like what you know Carmen would be interested in, what me would be. I'd be interested to find out from that if there's um a community facing, you know, instruction or whatnot. Um No, no, but just even saying for the the capabilities of the program itself that like people can then buy it and opt into what it is that they want because we've been And it's mobile friendly, which is the thing for many people, like the frustrating part of board docs is me, including me, it's like really hard to work on the bottom.
Yeah, you just get used to it.
You do.
You do. I mean, I
It's gonna happen.
To them, so you try to have to.
Just go down.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, is this more money than board docs?
So this is the interesting thing. We are gonna be forced to move, and I'm saying anything on Carmen currently. We're gonna be forced to move into this eventually cuz they're gonna phase out the board docs that we currently have.
Hmm.
This is actually, we we were looking at moving into like the more extended version of this board docs, but it was actually more money per year than moving to this version. If that makes sense. So yes, it is more money, but eventually we're gonna have no o- other option.
Can I ask you a clarion, just to the to the enhanced version of the board docs we use is more money.
You under
Then it increases the the cost to use this diligent version, which I feel
It wasn't, we're not as Yes, because they're they're trying
Make me wanna
Yes. Yeah, we're gonna be, we're again, we are going to be early adopters on this as well. Like we're one of the first to do this, but I think it's
Is it a yearly subscription?
Yes.
So we're gonna get a a lock-in rate for a year. I just don't
I'm not sure. We I'm we
You can only do year to year.
How it's year to year.
As a school, you can only do year to year.
The most yearly
On any subscription.
Okay.
We can do more.
We're not allowed to do more.
Right. We did try to negotiate cuz we were opting early, but they weren't
Don't
We know just to have opted for us. If they continue to get that rate, how much it went up? There's a list of like sample sites of different schools that have used it, so we could reach out and ask how they
I mean, we have to do it. I'm not saying that. I just want I don't wanna be hit.
No, it's good research to do.
We we did, we have this, we can share. I I think we have this information. I feel like we have this information. I will look at I think we got it in our demo.
We're getting it both as a Donna, so Carmen forwarded.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's both
There was
Two times.
Yes. We the way it was explained to us when we did the demo was that basically every they're not gonna be supporting regular board docs anymore. So um and and let's be honest, in reality, this does, this is like the least, this is like the light version.
Yeah.
And it's like I especially with the amount of policy that we have done now in the last few years, like Carmen, I'm sure Carmen wishes this happened. Yeah, it's a wish we had a last year. The formatting is off and
Right.
This is gonna make it so much easier for workflow, communication transparency, and then actually just for the board. I think it'll be better, but I think you're right. We'll look at the we'll look at the um
I mean, I know you have to do it either way, but
Yeah, we're just gonna get it. We're getting on it earlier. Um
I saw it's ADA combined. Was it also translation?
No, that's one of the things I did ask and they have not moved that direction as of yet. And don't know when they're gonna do it.
That's surprising.
Mm hmm, yeah. Yeah. We we they didn't have an answer, right, on that?
No.
But I can do a summary though, right? And then say you can do summaries of the meeting.
I know the the word document, you you have the translation built into the word document, but everything else that they showed was within the site, but so I don't know. It's um I know the policy corner, we created that because of the idea of translating, so that's what I was asking.
Cory, that would be something that would be a tad on though. And then jumping down the line, like if there this is new, we might just be trying to get it out and make modifications that they don't I would assume that would be the most profitable way for them to stay.
They always say Google, you can use the Google um translates, but it doesn't work a majority of times, so it's not rely on the way to translate.
And then the do we know if the streaming that it does, if we would move our platform off YouTube into this? Have we talked about that at all?
We'll have to talk to Greg.
Yeah, how that would just definitely work.
Embedding something, it's probably just embedding into board docs.
Yeah, cuz if we're gonna, it would be nice to have it just all streamlined. Um Does anyone have any other questions?
I think we have a few good we talked to you about communications stuff and back.
All right. What's next on our agenda, guys? I'll see.
Anytime. It might be a question.
So the first policy is the first reading revision policy four three two one dot oh five confidentiality and access to individualized education programs, individualized education service programs and service plans. The Board of Education.
Motion, we're agreeing.
Second, all in favor?
This one, when that was required, we just had to make some edits to it and this came to us from the PPS department with the um changes. Again, certain things were just to make it inclusive language and um just how to go about, yeah, for student, this is the student records.
Okay. Student record where we changed, we just changed the the language and the acronyms and what we call them and then how it says parents, how parents access it. So we'll bring this one back. And that's any other question, though? Okay. The next one is first reading policy four three two one dot one O, programs and services for privately placed non-public school students with disabilities. The Board of Education recognizes
We agree.
Second, all in favor?
Is this new?
Yes.
This is new, right?
This one is new, right, Carmen? Lauren, did you have a question on this? You had asked me something.
Yeah, I just wanted to understand it a little bit.
Why?
On, yeah, like, did it mean, I guess I was asking, does it mean is that photo private school can get served through through the public school, so is that one of the Yeah, I just wasn't sure what um parental
Because it's a it's a confusing title.
Non-public school students and but
Like who fits in the category of non-public school students with
Not like, so sometimes we have students that we send out to other public schools. This is if they're enrolled, if the parents choose to enroll the child into a non-public school, we're saying that they're still eligible for services.
Come here, or
There's different ways it
Oh, yeah.
It depends, it depends on the circumstances, but yeah, it essentially entitles students to related services or other services that they would receive in a public school to a certain extent. So maybe a Barokil school or uh you know, other private schools.
And this again came to us from the PPS department, so thank you for
Oh, I have another question. So if you have a child in private school who you feel has something that they wanna talk to you about, they can just still reach out and set up like an evaluation still or
Yeah, they would if if it's a student residing in our our, this is their home district, they would reach out to us for an initial evaluation. There's also also students who may have uh either a five oh four or any big class. either a five oh four or maybe classified who are in, uh, currently placed in non-public schools and, and what you could arrange services for.
Um, thank you. Okay.
Okay, so my colleagues would like to adjourn the evening, you are welcome.
Thank you, I'm very welcome.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations. Okay, that brings us to the first reading policy four three three two, universal pre-K. When the district operates universal pre-K.
Motion to read.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
So this is something that we are putting forth that's new. Um, it does not in, apply to us at the moment because as of right now, we have more spots than there are. We have more spots than our students from our pre-K program, but we needed to have something in place in case we ever are in a position like your funding happens to be here and we have to do a lottery. This is what you, I think, Steph had asked, so we just wanted to make sure we covered bases. If that ever happened, we are not in that position right now, but in case that happened, we wanted to make sure that we had something set in place for how that process works.
Okay, so we'll bring that back to next week. Two weeks. May twentieth, the next fourth week. Uh, this is the first reading, Internet Safety four five two six point one, the Board of Education is committed to undertaking efforts that serve to make.
Motion to read.
Second, all in favor?
This is, um, pretty straightforward in terms of what is prohibited on district devices and district, um, internet.
Yes, social networking sites. I mean, I, I honestly, we're, I think we're in the beneath eleven, I think we're doing most of this already, but now it is set into policy.
So this is a lot of talking about restrictions that there will be and um, it does go into, I believe, the this cross-referenced with, um, other, other policies as to what will then take place if this is breached.
Okay. Bring that one back. This is the first reading policy four five two five dot one, our Internet Safety Regulation. The following rules and regulations.
To read.
Second, all in favor?
This has a lot of definitions to define what was just in the policy as you saw.
Okay.
Right, this has authorization and training for staff and students. So this is kind of just lays out everything that was just in that policy.
Then the next one is the first reading policy four two eight two concussion management guidelines and procedures in the Hendrickson.
Motion to read.
Second, all in favor? This one did change. You can see that all of the red, there was a lot of just, the last time was updated, yeah, twenty twelve was the last time this was updated. So this was just updating protocols as to, especially because this is becoming unfortunately something more prevalent. Um, so just how this is handled, what it looks like and, um, what actions are to be taken from there. It specifically, the cross, the cross-reference and why this all changed is the NICE guidelines, so the New York State Education Department guidelines for concussion management actually changed in twenty twenty-three. So we are updating it to catch up up there.
Yeah, before this should just be seven days, now it's based on, um, the individual after they are identified to be, um, cleared to come back to fight. There's a lot more, I guess we're just more aware of everything.
We also added to the concussion management team. Bring that one back. And the last one of the night is the first reading policy eight one one three, extreme heat conditioning days. As required by education. Second, all in favor? Okay, so this is a new policy, um, I don't think it technically, technically goes, does this, when does this technically go into fact?
Twenty twenty-five.
So it doesn't technically go into effect until?
Well.
Like September, I mean.
While Hoco said it had to be in place for September first, twenty twenty-five, we were looking at, so you'll notice that the degrees changed. So it is, um, and it just, and if you reach there, it's not necessarily immediate dismissal of school, it is finding other. And this is not coming from us, this is coming from Governor Hoco who set these guidelines, we just put them into our policy. So it's not necessarily a closed school because you don't wanna have as much interrupted instruction. So it's finding a location that would have, uh, first you, you go turning off the lights, turning on the fans, and then it's having locations where um, there would be air circulating so that it's not at eighty-two degrees.
So is it eighty-two degrees that you could send kids home or is it?
No, you're eighty, eighty-two is when you, you have eighty-two is when you have, we have, this is what you're expected to do first.
Right, and then eighty-two or eighty-eight is?
Eighty-eight, it's, and no, if you'll notice, look at where it says actions to be taken, that's what I'm saying, it's not a, immediate quote of the law, it's first move students and staff to cooler locations, so they're not, they're not, that's, and I think that was Governor Hoco's whole part. Is that it was not to send, like, the first step should not be sending students home, it's, you know, making use of your space, so if this cafeteria is cooler, then maybe you do location then rotate around.
They're gonna rotate.
They're gonna, we're gonna have to be creative in that sense, I mean, we're hoping we are not in this situation, then part of our capital project is to mitigating some of this and add some air conditioning to our schools. And that will be something that we will continue to look at, especially when these change in climate and these rules that are being put in place.
I think, uh, if I remember correctly, last year, and I think Mike mentioned it in one of the board meetings last year, about how each of the principals has a plan for their building, um, what happens on really hot days.
Yeah, if you, if you look at the other consideration.
Making outlines here, right?
Identify the hot spots and don't lose them.
Right.
If you're going to gym class, don't have them running around.
The unfortunate part is that it interrupts instruction.
It does.
It does.
But less than sending them home.
Agreed. So I'm glad that we have this in, in a, a plan, at my, um, um, okay. And we are welcome to comment that. It's on our board plan, when our principals.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so next is committee reports and I'm just gonna, I'm gonna start first by saying happy birthday to me, that'll be good.
Yeah.
Um, we hope you got to celebrate and you're very lucky, it was on a Wednesday and we did not have a board meeting.
Yes.
That's your birthday wish.
So that was, that's on happy birthday.
It was planned by.
Um, I wanna take.
Five days ago.
I just wanna, I'm gonna make a statement just on behalf of the board, uh, quickly, um, cause this could have been a new business and I'm sorry that I didn't put it there, but it'll be in a committee report, so. May is a busy month full of ease of appreciation to honor so many of our professionals. On behalf of the Board of Edu- Education, I wanna take a moment to extend our sincere gratitude to all our incredible teachers during Teacher Appreciation Week, thank you for the passion, creativity, and patience you bring into your classrooms each day. The impact you have on your students lasts far beyond the school year and we are grateful for your dedication. And today is Nurse Appreciation Day, as, as Margaret mentioned, you are the honest home heroes of our schools. Thank you for taking such good care of our students' health day in and day out. May first was Principal Appreciation Day and we would also like to take a moment to thank our dedicated principals for their steady leadership commitment and the care they show every day in guiding our schools and supporting our students and staff. From the classrooms, the cafeteria, from our offices to our buses, every role matters at Hendrickson and every one of you plays a vital part in creating a safe, supportive, and inspiring environment for our students to thrive. I also really wanna take a moment to thank our amazing PTAs for their, they always make sure every year that our staff feel seen, supported, and appreciated through the week. Um, and your efforts make a big difference in, um, in making that go a long way, so thank you, our PTAs. Um, anyway, I just wanted to take a moment to, to, to speak to that, the big week. Um, my others, I have a list. Um, committee report wise, I don't know if we have anything specific. I don't, um, I just wanted to remind everyone that next week is Blue Mountain Middle School Career Day on the nineteenth of May. That's usually a big day there.
So that's happening.
May nineteenth.
May nineteenth.
I'm still, it's May nineteenth. It's May nineteenth. And then I wanna wish the Blue Mountain Band, I think the band is going to, uh, Music in the Parks next week or tomorrow? They're, they're going tomorrow.
Friday.
Friday, and like.
The week of March.
The ninth, they're going the ninth, Friday, so good luck to them.
Yeah, Middle School Chorus Conference next Tuesday.
And then there's another one on Thursday.
Middle School will be very busy.
Yeah. Everything on the calendar is middle school.
They're doing this one on Saturday.
But that's, that's all. That's okay, that's like whoever participates from.
Correct. All people.
And the whole, that's all capital, all the musicians and. Um, did I miss anything?
Um, I know, uh, Chris Moreno mentioned it, but May twenty-first is the next step to meeting. Um, and that will be, they moved it, it was supposed to be next Wednesday, the fourteenth, it is now the twenty-first, this is of the forum. That will be kind of like a fair, as he was mentioning, so it's gonna have a lot of, um, different professionals and individuals, so it would be a really great place for people to come out and see, like, guidance helps, like, all the different people that can support our students and who can advocate for their students.
Right.
It's the same day as, you said the twentieth, but isn't it the twenty-third?
It's the.
Army is twenty. Army is the Tuesday.
Yes, where the, where the Tuesday there.
Oh, that's right. It's almost Tuesday.
Mm-hmm.
Like I, I don't have my calendar. I don't know, do you think on Wednesday?
You have it, cause we have a board meeting Wednesday as well. There at eleven, we're.
Well, yeah, I put my own, so my family is also there. And I do.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn the meeting.